I appreciate your patience with us this evening. Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome to the January meeting of the Plum Borough School District Board of Directors. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vento, roll call.
Mr. Colella.
Here.
Mr. Daldel.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. McGuff.
Here.
Mr. St. Ledger.
Present.
Mrs. Stepnick.
Here.
Mr. Tomorello.
Present.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Mr. Zuko.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The board met an executive session on January 5th, January 13th, January 20th, and this evening, January 27th, to discuss matters of personnel, negotiations, student discipline, and real estate.
Approve of the minutes. Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes: December 16 regular board meeting, January 13 education, facilities, and policy committees, and the January 20th finance committee.
Like to make that motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
We have one district feature this evening. January is school directors month. I'll read a paragraph here if you could indulge me. "The role of the local elected school official has served the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and local communities in meeting the needs of public education since the passage of the Free School Act in 1834. These local boards have discharged their responsibilities to the public education in a manner which has placed public education in the forefront of our educational systems. Local elected officials have distinguished themselves and their communities in this non-paid volunteer public service commitment. The contributions of these men and women should be recognized and appreciated by those who benefit from their workings with our public school system. Every January we thank our board for their time, effort, and dedication for our children and residents." On behalf of this Plum school community, I would like to thank the Board of School Directors this evenings. Mrs. Vento and Dr. Ross, you're passing out a small token of our appreciation. I would just like to thank each of you for your time and effort. I know that there are long hours and evenings at board meetings, as well as time that you put in reviewing all the documentation that's necessary to complete your roles. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool, for the kind words.
Prior to citizens' comments on agenda and non-agenda items, I have an addition to the agenda this evening. This agenda item will come under Personnel Committee, item B-15. I'll read the motion, then you can make comments at the podium during citizens' comment on agenda items. Recommend approval to ratify collective bargaining agreement between the Plum Borough School District and the Plum Borough Education Association for a term from September 1, 2014 through June 30, 2018.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. With that agenda item added, are there any citizens' comments on agenda items this evening?
I'm Sherri Sachoka. I'm the PTA Council President. The Plum Borough School Board, you've generously contributed your time and talents toward the advancement of our Plum Borough education system. You represent our community, attend meetings, conferences, continual learning understandings of our public education. You are dedicated volunteers, community leaders, neighbors, parents, grandparents, and many of our friends. Plum Borough PTSAs, PTAs, and council would like to give, on your behalf, $100 to the Plum Borough Community Library. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We also like to thank PTA for hosting an event this evening. We appreciate it. It's collaboration, and I greatly appreciate what you folks do in the school district, too. Thanks again. Any additional items on agenda items? Are there any comments on non-agenda items? Non-agenda items? Okay, being no comments, Dr. Glasspool, the agenda, please.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Rich Zuko Chair, recommend approval to accept the use of facilities as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to pay general obligation bond invoices as presented.
On behalf of the Facilities Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to advertise the following miscellaneous bid items for 2015-16 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. For those who are not looking at a copy of the agenda, those miscellaneous bids are for custodian and maintenance supplies, bus transportation parts and supplies, and athletic equipment and supplies. Thank you.
Any other discussion? No other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept change orders as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation also. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just that these change orders are for the new Holiday Park School, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to draft and advertise requests for proposals for the demolition of the administration building and Pivot Elementary School.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, too. Yes, I have some.
I was discussing with Dr. Glasspool earlier, and we discussed this during the facilities meeting, that I would like to keep the portion of the old Pivot that is what is considered, I guess, the cafeteria room. Since it was added on later and has its own separate facilities, I'd like to have our engineering personnel and staff figure out exactly how much space we have once we turn down or tear down the old Pivot and see if we can possibly save that structure for use if we're going to put any kind of athletic fields in that area. I believe it has cafeterias, bathrooms, and so forth, and it also has its own heating cooling system, I believe, and sewage. So, I think it would behoove us, before we demolish that piece in particular, that we put a bid out that they're separate them between all-inclusive and all-accept that. And try to get that information before we can actually firm up those bids. And...
Mr. Zuko, is it okay if what we'll do is we'll get a bid to tear down, or demolish old Pivot, the maintenance garage there, the administrative building, and then a separate bid to do the same thing minus the cafeteria? So, we'll go out for two RFPs with bid specs, and then additionally, we'll work with our engineer record to see what kind of space would be available for use with that structure still on it.
Okay, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Because I know we have classrooms on both sides of that hallway, and we have a parking lot. I'm not sure what all can fit in there, but I'm sure that we should look at it first.
Well, once we get the bid specs together, we won't be able to go out for at least 30 days, so we'll be able to have some information for you. Maybe not the next finance meeting, but certainly for March, the latest.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be possible to save the gymnasium as well, if that could be used for anything?
I don't believe so, because it's an integral part of that structure. And below the gymnasium was the old cafeteria and the, I believe there was the boys locker room. I don't think that could be structurally saved and used, unlike the cafeteria, which was a separate add-on when they remodeled.
Okay.
It would be nice, but I don't think we can do it.
All right. Any other discussion? I think we have some other...
I was just going to mention, when will we advertise for the auction, for the items in the building?
We'll probably follow a similar timeline that we did with the Adelaide Stevenson demolition, but, you know, I can't see starting earlier than mid-summer, and most likely there would be a timeline that we'll put out and we'll prepare, you know, starting with the possible demolition after school, so that the auction wouldn't occur until the students vacate and all of our items that we're going to keep or move to another school are out. So, I can't see it happening before July.
Okay.
I have a question, something we may have to consider. We might have to do an act 34. We might have to check into that.
If we haven't done that?
I don't think we do. Because it's still unused, so I don't know if we need to do an act 34 or not.
Any other discussion?
When you are planning on closing Pivot, old Pivot permanently, you are going to have to go through a school closing procedure, which is a public hearing before it's closed. And that could set back your timeline for the demolition, so we want to get that started probably soon. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The Facilities Committee met on January 13th. Mr. Zuko, make this report.
Well, we just covered just about everything that's really important here. We've got the new Holiday Park is moving along very well, on schedule and on budget. We are having problems with the regency, though. The remodeling of that structure is going to have to have some real close scrutiny done to it. We thought we were going to be able to remodel it, save some money. Turns out that that structure probably was not as sound or built to the specifications that we had anticipated. We did not have accurate drawings from that school. I'm sure everybody reads the paper and knows that those drawings that are required today were not required when that school was built, so we're running into some problems. And the cost of correcting those problems may come too close to the cost of actually building a new school, so that's going to have to be reevaluated. Not saying there has been a decision made, but as we keep finding these problems, we have to reconsider what's going to be the best course of action. Hopefully, by another month, for sure, I hope we can provide some kind of announcement on our transportation system. And I think that's about it as far as facilities is concerned this month.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 10th, at 6:00 PM in the high school boardroom. Personnel Committee, Mr. Kevin Daldel Chair, recommend approval to accept the following: retroactive retirements. Ron Harrison, bus driver. Diane Colella, cook manager. John Domicini, mechanic.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Since these were all put into one motion, my wife is included there, so I am not going to vote on her retirement.
You don't want her home?
Diane, don't watch this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, with that motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following retirements: Yvonne McKenzie, bus driver. William McDonald, custodian. Jim Truax, maintenance. Mary Ann Lozero, food service supervisor.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to wish Mary Ann Lozero good luck in her retirement. I worked with her for several years, as chair of the Food Service Committee, and she was wonderful to work with. And I do wish her the best of everything, and I think she'll be sorely missed, as will Mrs. Colella.
Thank you.
Will we miss her cookies?
Yeah, we will.
Yeah.
And as a matter of course, we do send congratulation letters out to all retirees, right?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Deborah Conti, bus aide, retroactive to January 19, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Sean Oglesby, long-term health and physical education substitute teacher, retroactive to October 30, 2015, I'm sorry, 14 through March 29, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Michael Yakoo, bus aide, retroactive to January 21, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Carol Fox, bus aide, retroactive to January 21, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Barbara Augustine, food service worker at O'Blockt Junior High, effective January 27, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to eliminate a special education PCA paraprofessional position at Holiday Park Elementary School, retroactive to January 13, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Before we get carried away here, the very next motion, one of these is to terminate, another one is to replace immediately.
Correct.
Just so people understand, when we go through this, I guess, type of scenario, that they understand that that's what's happening here. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to create a special education PCA paraprofessional position at Center Elementary School, retroactive to January 14, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to create an elementary guidance position for the 2015-16 school year.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept an educational sabbatical leave request pursuant to the public school code for Marissa Magnuson, earth and science teacher, or space teacher at Plum High School for the fall semester of the 2015-16 school year.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following teachers for a professional contract who have successfully completed three years of service with the district.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following leaves as listed.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of resolution, appointing Dr. Glasspool as superintendent of schools for a term commenced in July 1, 2015, and terminated midnight, June 30, 2020, at a compensation of $1,000, I'm sorry, $142,600 for the 2015-16 school year pursuant to the terms and conditions of a written employment contract as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
And I would like to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just thank Dr. Glasspool for his years of service, past several. He's taken a pay freeze for budgetary reasons, so I appreciate his efforts and commitments to our district, and I'm glad to see he's on board for another five years.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to say, Kevin, just mirroring what you just said, I think everyone on the board has appreciated working with you, Dr. Glasspool, and just appreciate your commitment to our community, to our district, and to our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also have a philosophy, we can never have enough good people working for us. And Dr. Glasspool is a good person. I really appreciate what he does for the district, for the students, for the teachers, and for the taxpayers.
That being said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
I'd like to sincerely thank the board for this reappointment. Item 15 is the addition. I'll read it again. Recommend approval to ratify collective bargaining agreement with the Plum Borough School District and the Plum Borough Education Association for a term from September 1, 2014 through June 30, 2018.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to thank the members of the negotiating committee, the members of the teachers' union, and the members of the board that spent many long hours negotiating this contract. At this point, it's still not a contract. It requires both parties to agree to it, so this is our part of agreement to the contract. And I won't give up any details until both parties agree to this contract.
Any other discussion? Ms. Vento, roll call, please.
May I ask a question? Do we, can we do a discussion and our vote, or would you like that separate? I mean, I'm passing up the discussion portion to, I don't want to be, you know...
If you would like to discuss, we can discuss.
Okay.
Why don't we go ahead and do that before we vote?
Well, because what I'm going to say, I'm going to vote not in favor of this contract, this preliminary contract, I guess we'd call tentative, because I would like more time to examine it more thoroughly. And I think, seeing that was completed yesterday, I don't think the board has had enough time to completely look at everything, and I'm sure when it's presented to the membership, that they're going to expect more than one day to look at it also. So, my vote is going to be no at this time. So, if you're going to do your roll call, that's my discussion.
Well, any other discussion? I mean, we opened it back up for discussion. Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Colella, if I may?
Sure.
First, I'd like to thank our negotiating team and our teachers for, everybody recognizing the number-one priority is the education of these kids, and it's in our school district, and finding a compromise that's good for not only the district themselves, but also the community. And so, I do believe we have spent countless hours. I think our cutoff time is 11 o'clock, and we've spent till way after midnight at some points talking about this for months. So, I wholeheartedly believe this evening that when I vote yes, I'm voting yes with as much knowledge as humanly possible, and I think we've read all of the documents that there are to read, so...
Any other discussion before we do a roll call vote? Any other discussion? Ms. Vento, roll call.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. McGuff.
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepnick.
Yes.
Mr. Tomorello.
No.
Mrs. White.
Yes.
Mr. Zuko.
No.
Mr. Colella.
Yes.
Mr. Daldel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Very much.
Education Committee, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher Chair, recommend approval to accept the letter of agreement with Prezi Ridge and the Plum Borough School District, effective January 27, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval for Missy Karkowski to attend Smart Amp Champs Conference in Seattle, Washington, from Thursday, February 19, 2015, through Sunday, February 22, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just please note that the travel for this conference and the fees associated were paid for through a grant.
It's great recognition for the school district. Congratulations to Missy, I think.
Thank you.
Bring back some good stuff for us. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the voluntary informal disposition for student E.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No, excuse me, no discussion. I'm sorry, we can't discuss that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The Education Committee met on January 13, 2015. Mrs. Gallagher will make this report.
Yes, we had an Apple rep come in and do a discussion on the one-on-one initiatives and letting us know about the devices that we could possibly be giving to our students. It was a very informative presentation. I think that we had all spoke about how education is going in the trend of meeting technology, and this was something that we definitely wanted to look into. We have not made a definite decision on whether or not we are going to go with, you know, we're just in the infant stages of looking at the iPads. I think the next phase would be, there would be an executive briefing, which is a larger team of Apple reps that would come and discuss some of the monetary items and additional information that we're looking for. I also wanted to say that, to go with that, we were talking about doing a survey, and I know that is also being tweaked as we speak, in putting that survey out to our students and our parents in the community, and asking how they would, their responses on, you know, having the one-on-one initiative with the iPads. And that, again, we are looking to put that, hopefully, link that with the parent portal and with, well, it'll definitely be on the website, so... Again, we are in the, we are in a forward move with this, so I just wanted to, you know, let the community know that to look for those things, look for that survey coming out, either on the parent portal or definitely on the website.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 10th, following the Facilities Committee meeting in the high school boardroom. Finance Committee, Mrs. Michelle Stepnick Chair, recommend approval of the Treasury report and bill payments for December 2014 as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend authorizing administration to make the 2015-16 Act I preliminary budget proposal available for public inspection on January 28, 2015, and give public notice on or before February 7, 2015, of an intent to adopt an Act I preliminary budget proposal on February 17, 2015, as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Dr. Glasspool, could you please explain what the Act I proposal entails?
What this, the approval of this would permit the school board to raise taxes above the Act I index, which is currently set at 2.9. So by adopting a budget on February 17, the budget that's posted on the website and will be obviously available for public inspection tomorrow, the board would be able to raise above that 2.9 percent. Without that, we would be limited to the 2.9 percent of the index.
Thank you.
I'd also like to point out that that does not mean we are going to raise taxes, it just means that we just have the ability to. So it's, we have the long discussions over the next several months with a budget, so this does not mean that there's going to be a tax increase above the index, just that there's ability to do so.
Any other discussion? I agree with both of those. It gives us more flexibility in the budgeting process, and I think the board needs that right now. It does not include, it does not engrain in stone any tax increase. Any other, okay, all those in favor, well, we're going to do this by roll call, excuse me, I think this should be a roll call vote. I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. St. Ledger?
No.
Mrs. Stepnick?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Morello?
No.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
No.
Mr. Kalella?
Yes.
Mr. Daldel?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
That's five. Is that enough?
Yes, that carries. And remember, that is not your final budget.
It's not our final budget. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to settle commercial tax assessment appeal for tax parcels number as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to discuss that too. Not because I need to discuss it, but I just want to make the public aware, this is one of those appeal settlements that we had set money aside for, pending appeals, and this one, we lost. And I believe it's going to, we're going to have 12, $24,000 less of tax revenue next year because of this appeal.
12,000 less.
Yeah, each year, for 13 and 14. My only other part of the discussion would be, does anyone know what our balance is that we have left for, to cover those appeals? Mr. Maricini?
We had $150,000 budgeted. As of the last time I looked, we had expended 71,000 of that, so we have about 79,000 left for the appeal assessments.
Does that include these, these appeals?
They'll come off of that. This will come off of that 79,000 dollar balance.
Okay.
Any other discussion? No other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The finance committee met on January 20, 2015. Mrs. Stepnick will make this report.
Thank you. In addition to a very lengthy and thought-out budget discussion, we did have a couple presenters. One was from Huntley &amp; Huntley to talk about some well drilling and some possibilities of, I guess, leasing or doing some deep well drilling off-site into some of our property, and that may help us with some future funding. So the board was, I guess that was a preliminary discussion, just to see if there was anything we had any interest in going forward, or if any more research we wanted to do. And also, Dr. Gufala, who's retired superintendent, came and discussed with us the creation of a, of the general education funding, and how Pennsylvania really ranks in the top 10% of the United States by only funding 35% of basic education. So they're hoping with new leadership in Harrisburg, we'll end up having some sort of formula, I guess if you will, that will be more fair and equitable, that would increase the state's contribution, because currently, the only contribution we get is that small amount of 35%, or we may not even get all of that here in Plum Borough, the majority that comes from our taxpayers. So hopefully, we can see some positives come out of that as well. Also, a couple of reminders, one is the, your community home stamp farmstead forms are due by March 1st. Turn them in to get your, it's approximately $208 of savings off of your taxes, so you want to get those in by March 1st. And on a sad note, Mrs. Petrowski is going to be retiring from our tax office, so thank you very much for your years of service to the borough.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 17, 2015, following a special voting meeting in the high school boardroom. Policy committee, Mrs. Loretta White, Chair. The following policies are under review, no action is required at this time. Attendance, employment of district staff, students, teachers, and interns, assignment and transfer, conduct and discipline procedure, education misconduct, child abuse, contracted services, and volunteers. The policy committee met on January 13, 2015. Mrs. White will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. The meeting was very short for two reasons, one was time constraints, and the other is the fact that the laws that are impacting these policies are still evolving. The majority of these policies, under consideration, are relating to 21 bills and mending the provisions of the Child Protection Services Law. Okay, these changes will impact all policies, and also all people who are school employees, volunteers, and independent contractors. We will have a discussion of these policies at the next policy meeting on February 17. A complete listing of these policies can be found under the, in the district's website, under the school board link on the toolbar. I urge everyone who might be impacted by the changes of these policies to come to the meeting and to check out the changes that we are thinking about making to these policies. And actually, these changes are not ones that we want to make, but they are ones that have come down through Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you. There is more information that will impact a lot of volunteers, community leaders, and every employee in the district, so there is going to be a lot of discussion about this. So thanks, Ms. White.
Even independent contractors.
Absolutely. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 10th, following the education meeting in the high school boardroom. Transportation committee, Mr. Tom McGuff, Chair. The transportation committee did not meet this month. There's no report this evening. Athletic committee, Mr. John St. Ledger, Chair. Recommend approval to hire the following coaches for the 2014-15 spring season. Nathan Lucas, girls, ninth grade girls volleyball coach. Erin Malloy, O Block Girls Head Volleyball Coach. Chris Stotler, ninth grade baseball coach.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches for the 2014-15 spring season. Rachel Lee, assistant softball. Robert Corbin, another O Block softball. Randy Shatner, O Block softball. Michael Wallace, O Block, I'm sorry, high school assistant baseball.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The athletic committee did not meet this month. There's no report. Food service and nutrition committee, Mr. Joe Tom Morello, Chair. The food service and nutrition committee did not meet this month. There'll be no report this evening. Intergovernmental committee, Mr. John St. Ledger, Chair. There's no report this evening. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, Mr. John St. Ledger, Representative. There's no report this evening. Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Loretta White, Representative. There's no report this evening. Legislative Policy Council, Mrs. Michelle Stepnick, Representative. Mrs. Stepnick will make this report.
Thank you. It's pretty short. There's been some change in Harrisburg. We have a new governor, and he is recreating his cabinet, I guess if you will, and it'll be interesting to see how the priorities unfold. And he, this governor has made education, public education, a priority, so I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing some relief and receiving some funding from him. And I think that's about it. Hopefully, there'll be more as he continues on and evolves.
Thank you. Allegheny Intermediate Unit Number Three, Mr. Tom McGuff, Board Member. Mr. McGuff will make this report.
Actually, I have no report this evening, because our meeting last evening was snowed out, so we're rescheduled till next week, and I'll have a report at our next monthly meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.